Preparing to live stream, one second.
I got some stories for you first. Girls.
About any special person or anything?
Okay, we can.
About a lot of.
Public hearings.
So what?
In your way.
Too soon, April.
No. I love it when all my tech is.
The way the technology.
I just have to mute something.
Right till travel on?
Yeah. I'm coming up.
Sleep that time here, but I have to do something.
You see New York, I'll go Alex, no, on the sun. Go off.
I quite from all in DFW now.
I do.
Great.
They're all direct lines.
Got Milwaukee.
Yes, that's true, but that's going to see in-laws. Yeah.
Maggie, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Maggie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, she can hear me, but she's moving. Okay. I'm going to read the public hearing for the Empire Merchants North request for pilot amendment. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing pursuant to section eight fifty-nine dash A of the New York State General Municipal Law as amended will be held at the fight will be held by different county industrial development agency. On the sixteenth of November, twenty twenty-three at eight AM local time before the regular meeting of the board meeting, the directors of G C I D A. The public hearing will be held at the offices of the G C I D A located at forty-five Sunset Boulevard, Katsake, New York, one two zero five one in connection with following matters. A request from Empire Merchants North LLC for an amendment of a certain payment in lieu of tax agreement dated December first, two thousand and eight. As amended to by the certain first amendment dated November first, two thousand and nineteen, that's the pilot agreement. With respect to the E N N's facility located at sixteen Hotel Road in the town of Katsake, Green County, New York. Which is known as S B L number forty-one dot zero zero dash five dash thirty-six, that's the property. In connection with the property, E N N has requested an amendment to the pilot agreement effective for the payment in lieu of taxes to be made by the company. In January of two thousand and twenty-four on account of the two thousand and twenty-three assessment rules. The amendment would modify the payments due under the pilot agreement, such as all payments in lieu of tax. For the pipe property under the pilot agreement would be based on the product of. A, the annual assessment of the property established for each and every assessment role commencing with the two thousand and twenty-three assessment role, which was established at ten million, six hundred thousand. B, point zero zero one, and C, the applicable general tax rate per thousand. The I D A will at the above stated time and place hear all persons reviews in favor or opposition to the amendment by the G C I D A. Minutes of the public hearing will be made available to the public and members of the I D A. So at this time, we open it up to public comment, questions, and as there are no public.
Maybe I should just give a statement, we have a basic pilot agreement, they have a taxer, you know, to kind of boil this down to settle the thing. So what we're doing is basically allowing them to implement that settlement under a pilot agreement, so they requested it. I wanted to make sure we have a public hearing so that, you know, people would have some basis for commenting on it. And, you know, the, you know, when, you know, there's a temporary order here, so I think it's consistent with that. So I just want to kind of give everyone some context with it, but since we're modifying the formula, there should be a public hearing next month.
So with no members of the public present online or in person, we can, we can close the meetings, right?
We can close it, or if somebody comes in, we'll reopen.
Okay, do you need a motion to do that?
I think we do.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, if any member of the public comes during the meeting, we can open it up.
Yeah, just to start. And we'll call our regular meeting order.
Time is now three fourteen.
Do you need April to switch, or?
No, I'll edit the video.
Directly, okay.
Post it to both.
So we'll start with reading approval of our minutes for our October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, and a motion to accept, and I present.
I'll make the motion.
Second. I'll second all those in favor.
Aye.
Finance report.
I will make a motion to accept.
Maggie, I think I'm muted.
Presented. I'm, I muted?
I don't know, we can't hear Maggie now, but Maggie, you're us.
You want me to put it on my phone, cell phone?
This is territory here, we. Disruption in the order here.
Put it in the chat.
And just read it out loud.
Um.
You have to make the motion.
Have it done?
That's happening.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make that motion. Okay.
I'll second.
Second, those in favor. And on the check detail.
If you want me to put it on my cell, and then she can.
You can.
Yeah, that might be.
So just been a motion for the checks.
I'll make a motion on the check detail.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So in your packet for review, our plotter is fifteen years old, and we carried him, finally snapped on me. So I need, I need a motion for approval for even our contingency. To spend on a new plotter.
Okay. You got a source for that?
I T S would install.
Got a proposal, couple pages, joke.
This is something we still use.
We use it daily.
Well, we're supposed to be a lot more maps, that's my.
Danny Potter.
I don't see any, I don't see any maps hanging around.
Unfortunately, maybe actually five hours Google press.
Oh, here we go.
Yes, so I do, I turn.
How beautiful.
All the plans that go to the planning boards, I can print in house.
So forty-two hundred?
Forty-two hundred, I did price out other ones from these two directs, but having I Q.
Keys of order.
You know, support come in, they install it, they, they back it up, and then they'll include the old one, which is already ours, encompassing, and it's, like I said, fifteen years old, we made, we made good year.
Pretty good for a piece of equipment.
I'll be there in the first. I'll be second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So this week I did send out some policy update documents drafts, just for the board to review. I'd like maybe comments and feedbacks over the next month and put it back on the agenda to discuss further in December. Paul and I are going to do some more research on I D A's permissions to be able to do these pilots with housing. And I know Pocals office is coming out with some mandates, but that might not be until January. So just wanted to keep the board updated that we are still looking at doing housing policy updates.
It's in process.
It's in process. Okay, so moving on to projects. Carol, Walter, and Stewart, we are still somewhat at a standstill, we're waiting on the D E C permit. I've been in touch with Delaware, there is a letter that has gone to the town for them to review items. And then get that letter back for D E C. We're also pending on the town for updating their zoning, which is also in process. So right now, the I D A is on their part, we're at a technical standstill. Go ahead.
Probably at some point it's going to be bid.
Okay, I will make a note.
Yeah, so the bids are already out sixty, forty-five, fifty days now already, and the way this is going, matter of fact, I'm thinking it's probably, in reality, it's going to be next season. Need to say it, but.
Well, it also might be next season, do they have to repavements there also? Or is that all?
There shouldn't really be much on road cuts, it's all directional.
I'm sorry, why is it delayed so long?
Waiting on the D E C, waiting on D E C and Department of Health rules for the extensions. The same thing, we were waiting on Catskill too at this point still too, so we've been putting political pressure on strong on Catskill.
The county has been involved also, making calls, trying to get it moved.
Traveling up cost.
So that's, that's what I have on Carol right now. Battery storage, we have signed release option, got our first ten thousand dollar lease option payment in the bank, and we will be working with them moving forward in the spring on site preparedness.
Is there, just on the battery storage, we're saying, is there any considerations we have to give to local. Fire departments in the treatment of if there's an emergency incident?
It'll be.
Yeah, it's all part of.
It's like.
So you're hearing more and more negative stuff about the batteries, and God forbid when it goes wrong.
Yeah.
So we just.
They're not going to go away.
Yeah. No, we just got to make sure we're in front of it, so we're, we're leading the path to.
These are, I mean, they're, they're two deal containing unit, so and they're well separated, so I would imagine.
Again, they're isolated from anything, you don't see them like built right in the middle of shopping mall or something.
No, no.
Fire.
Yeah. No, it's just getting the, the fire out is the challenge.
Yeah.
And sometimes they just set, they just let it burn.
Yeah, the old surround and drown, but now they got to have chemical foam to, to do it, which is not always a good thing.
For finding out.
With the PFAs.
Yeah.
But that would be psych plan pool.
Yeah, just, I think we should be aware that that could, certainly, we might hear that from local municipalities.
Right, it's on my radar. Champlain Hudson, still waiting on their, the final easement packages, there's two now instead of three. And I, I reach out to Sam King on a daily basis, asking, you know, what's the next step?
They are working too, they're down in cementing right now on the, on that end.
You're, you're working right at the end of the line.
Are they working on all different spots?
Yeah, because we were up in, where was it, it was up by, looking at some stuff they had, and they're, it's like they started everywhere simultaneously.
Yeah.
They're figuring it out as they go every time.
Well, if anybody's been down nine W by Delos's old place down there, man, there was some investment equipment down there.
Oh, yeah.
Unbelievable.
Renee, is, is that, that's, that's the second cement plant, right? The one, the one that, not wholesome, the other one, so that's all C P H E work, is, is it coming out? I mean, I was trying to figure out why they were doing the, the work there at the cement plant. It's near the, you know, the right of way, I guess, but it's not quite where I thought, it's, where does it come out? Does it come out in, by the cement plant?
Into the river, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right at, right at Lehigh's dock on the north, so Lehigh has two docks.
Right.
There's a small dock, and then there's a south dock, which is the, the large predominant dock, it's just north of the bulkhead on the south dock.
Yeah, they have been doing work, I mean, and they've been doing work at least for the last six or eight weeks, as I've been going down nine W.
Any other questions on Champlain Hudson? So I'd like to move Flint Mines Solar and New Athens Generating into executive session to discuss litigation, and put that towards the end of the agenda. Next is Empire Merchants North. So this is a discussion and action to be taken on the amendment, we just had the public hearing with no comment.
So I think what we should do is let the, the items sit, I'll bring a resolution next month to make sure that if any comments come in to amend the pilot agreement consistent with the public hearing notes, this way people, if they comment, that way we can deal with it. All right?
Okay. For December.
Yeah, most don't make a difference. Especially the end of the pilot?
No, they have twelve years left. Right, so this would just be going coinciding with whatever assessment the town puts on it, then I do the calculations for the billing going forward.
It's because they had a freeze in the pilot agreement that basically made ineffectual the assessment reduction. I've been concerned, you know, that some of the assessments out at the park that are high for warehouse property, and that's confirmed by the stipulation and order, people recognizing. So all we're really doing is implementing an agreement reached between the town, the company, and that's what we would be doing.
Paul, going forward, do you, do you think that if we're doing pilots and that we should think about that language, think about changing it?
I think the freeze is really kind of, was really based on the Empire Zone project, so I think you're going to see less and less of them, you'll see be there either an assessment based formula. Which in case that would be automatic on any changes on it, or it would be a fixed seller payment, so I think, you know, basically, we don't have too many of the, the freeze stuff left, okay? I think that's, I think it's going to, it's going to take care of itself anyways.
Okay. Empire Riverfront Ventures, I'm going to open it back up to Paul.
So I think if your package is a resolution approving the execution and delivery of a subordinate mortgage, he had a bank of Green County mortgage, and all he's doing is paying off a portion of that mortgage with an S B A mortgage. So that's, it really helps Bank of Green County, because it mitigates the risk on it, so the resolution would approve, so just, you know, we have an interest in the property. So we have to mortgage that interest so that they have the title on, on the property, so that's all that the resolution does, it has our standard non-requalist clause, you know, we're not responsible for the payment of it, there's no liability of the members, so.
So we didn't need a motion?
Yeah, motion to accept, I, I, it's really a resolution. Neither, no, just take the resolution to approve that resolution.
And we're not giving a benefit of our position.
No. So moved.
Second. Close the favor?
Aye.
And I, I just have these.
Aye.
All right, so that's six and seven, so I guess you're Gateway Green and then Austin.
Correct, so Gateway Green Commercial Park at the twenty-one East, work continues on the infrastructure and road and Stewart's, I don't know if you've been by there, but the Stewart's building is, it's up. It's on the corner.
It's on.
Eight X. It's on that site.
Oh.
I'm like, why do you guys do it all these times?
When they do, why?
Oh. Yellow, blue, and dirty shit.
Which is good, I'm glad they're looking at that.
So one day it was all dark and all state.
They've been moving along quickly, so same issue here for our road, we have no, we cannot connect to the infrastructure yet, we're waiting on D E C. Same thing, Delaware and the area has put a letter out to town Catskill that I'm assigned, moving it back over to D E C. Same thing with political pressure there, Warren Hart, Sean, they called our, our people, our senators.
Well, we will, like, one thing, we will expect to see a change order, because we only bid out, you know, we did a soil borings that showed no rock, and then we put a bid spec in for thirty cubic yards of rock removal, we're well over thirty. And I was out there, it's hard rock, and I was there yesterday.
Is that what they're doing?
To dust, I mean, unlike rock that normally comes off in chips, this stuff is just like, it just makes dust with that, they've been pounding on, they got the water, the water line is in along the new road, the sewer line is three quarters of the way out to twenty-three. Haven't started the road base and stuff obviously yet, but other than that, there's no snags. We have a meeting with Stewart's at eleven to try to find out, figure out the coordination issue, because I understand that Stewart's is having a little bit of an issue with Central Hudson needing to relocate some utilities so they can complete their storm order. And then all of us are looking at the fact that the blacktop plants are going to close next week, and, you know, they will open again, so we just have to sort of work through this.
Sometimes you get an extra week out of that, possibly.
Possibly, and you can, you can pay open the plant up again.
But you got to, you know, if you're pouring asphalt, you got to have a temperature, it's, it's just a little tricky, you know?
No, I get that, and we've done it late too, which is not good, because most of my state spec be forty-five degrees and rising.
Good luck.
So anyway, there could be, so we'll, we'll know, could be, there's some rumor that I got to get confirmed that there's a discussion that Stewart may not open right away this winter, I don't know how they're going to be, they're parking lot. So we'll know more on that, but things are progressing, people are working, they're moving earth, and it's nice to see.
Yeah.
So we've been coordinating with Stewart's on, obviously, the visitor center, that has not gone out to big yet, I've been working with Warren and Catskill, so it's all of the. Struggling, timing, everything, you know, coming to a, the stars align, that kind of thing, so we're still working on it.
Will they hire Stewart's to do the work? Well, they, they're, they're used to building a box, so they're pretty good.
So we will be changing that box, the roofline, the front, the aesthetics.
Everybody read through the draft finding statements for the hotel, you know, you can see what we really did was we tried to capture not just hotels individually, but the net benefit, and because that's, you can't look at just hotels, so when we went into this. When I went into a project, we should buy this land and do this, that was the vision, we're going to need a net anchor, it's going to take a pilot to get the net anchor, but we'll produce other taxable properties. I don't know how anybody in their right mind could ever see a problem with this, when you look at the increased net worth that we, you know, the increased assessment value we put on there, or you compare what the pilot is compared to what the old hotel paid, there's no loss. Now, so if that thing had stayed vacant, there's really no loss to anybody on this job, okay, it's all gain, and the tourism center is just like a cherry on the top of Sunday, so. But I thought it was important, nobody else is going to get a bite at the apple of the I D A in that business plan, so this is our one chance to sort of tell the big picture story.
So obviously, we just jumped over to D, Catskill Lodge and L C, so under the draft finding statement, what Renee's referring to is that that entire area is included in, in this draft, we're talking about Stewart's going in. We have a third pad that'll be available, so when we ran the numbers, which are, our draft is attached for you to look at, there's added value for Stewart's, a future restaurant. The building being donated by Stewart's, it's all part of the package.
It's like a mini park.
Right.
Even though it's only three parcels, it's like a mini.
It is, it's a good park.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, and just, so everyone remembers that was kind of with the idea, you know, the county had done the litigation on the foreclosure of the taxes, so it's got seven hundred thousand dollars or eight hundred thousand taxes, then I ended up taking it through the bankruptcy at the trial level. So it's been kind of cooperative on that, and then we have to pay back some portion of their principal, and it's been a cooperative project for the, you know, the county, I think everyone's kind of proud of what's happened there, especially since we got rid of the quality and I saw it, our main gateway, so I think that's, you know, it's going to be a good thing for the community and the public.
Yeah.
Project that needed stimulus, because that hotel was going to sit there and fall down, even if the county ended up with it, what was going to happen next? And if it went to one of their auctions, who knows what was going to happen with that?
Someone would have bought it and tried to band, and band-aided, you know, and it just would have been an I saw it.
Or a straw man would have bought it for them, and they'd be right back there, so this is a project that needed, like I said, a joint I D A county operation, I think it's worked out.
I, I.
Really, it's also.
Oh, it's your child.
Because nothing would have happened if we hadn't stepped on it, so I think it's, I, I, I think everybody would be happy.
So the actions for today.
Everybody's agree.
Is just to accept the draft finding statement, and then we did set public hearing for December nineteenth, so just reaffirm that, and it'll be in the town Catskill, I just have to work with Catskill for location.
Do you motion to accept that?
Oh, we already did the, we can reaffirm it today, but the action is to accept the draft statement, and then we set the, the date and the time.
The public hearing, are those two separate motions, April?
Yes.
Okay, so any motion to accept statement findings?
Don't move.
Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to set public hearing for, what was the date?
December nineteenth at six P M.
December nineteenth.
And second motion?
Second.
All those in favor? And where are we doing the public?
It'll be in the town of Catskill, I just have to work with them on the location, whether it's in a school in Catskill, but it will be in Catskill, and then I'll put on public notice for everybody.
Just a quick question, you've already moved on, any concern with the rock here, experience you're finding with the hotel site itself?
Yeah, they're, they're aware of it, because they actually had somebody come in and do some ones for themselves, so if you remember a while back, we had to change, reconfigure, we reconfigured the lots after the first set, because they needed to split the hotel to put the pool. Where, so that the pool would be where the rock was the highest, which will save them excavation, so, yeah, they are aware of it, they did do their own borings. We warned them, well, I had to can tell you, when we first met them at the site, I brought, brought on us, when I said, here's the bedrock, so.
So there's, there's no surprises, the back door shut, it's locked, chairs against it.
Well, I mean, they're still in the due diligence period on the contract of sale, so they're still in the ability to back out, but there's no, literally absolutely no indication that, or everybody's still on, just on positive.
We're spending money on, in terms of site plan approvals and all that, didn't, hey Maggie, did you vote on both of those resolutions, because I didn't hear?
I voted aye.
Okay, I just want to repeat that.
Yep.
Moving on to Austin Glen Park, we had a team meeting with a potential client yesterday, Connecticut, they signed an option for the first three months, with a second three months at five thousand dollars. Due diligence period started.
No, well.
So I would say this time around, they, they brought some new people, so my sense of this is that the, the people we met the first time, two of the guys are really like real, real estate agents. They look around, find sites, try to make a deal. Ruben represents the investment end of things, and we know Connecticut's got things out there, they've done things, but they brought the other partners in, they're partnered with these guys from Argentina, and I had a little, I had more comfort. So when they first sent us the site plan, you know, we said, look, give us some good idea, I looked at it, I was like, you guys absolutely did not consider topography on this site. It, it's just such a mantle, it actually blows our secret out of the water, you know, our secret would have to be redone, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why we asked for a meeting, is we wanted to have this come to Jesus meeting, like, look, this is not realistic, you can't put a three hundred foot long parking lot on a mountain like this, you know? So this John or James that they had with them, he's much more knowledgeable, he had a notebook, well, you were here, so he was asking, he knows what questions to ask, and he's much more pointed, and when he went to the site with them, that's the first thing Max told me, he said, he looked at him, he said, what are you guys thinking, this topography don't work? But they feel we can make something, I do feel if they make some arrangements and do things a little different, they could come up with something viable there, so. We were very clear with them that the I D A had held this property up for over three and a half years with the hospital, and there was no intention to do that again. So basically, you got six months to come to us honestly and say, okay, we really think this could work, and our suggestion then was we would not option anymore, we, we, we'd work out a deal on a contract of sale with a due diligence period. It would have to be, you know, it would have to be a little bit of a long due diligence period in this case, because it's a good sized project, but.
Can you give that just a couple sentence description of what that is as now it's revisioned?
Well, they're only revisioning it as of two thirty yesterday afternoon, so none of us know yet.
I just want to confirm.
Destination to.
Yep, okay, it's.
Yeah, I don't want that one.
That's the water park.
The lagoon.
Lagoon, yeah, I just want.
Hospitality, they just need to scale it back and need, and they need to look at the east or western part of the site with more sensitivity.
Right.
They come up with uses on that site that could support recreation, which they can't.
Yes.
There's all kinds of little things you can do on that other part of the site.
Throw out.
With Dr. Bucket.
Oh, you did?
Oh, yeah.
It's about, you, you made notes about a soccer dome and different other, yeah, we're talking about recreation year round. Pardon me?
Not the populace for a soccer.
They'll draw.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, God, yeah.
All right, the one in Albany, since they do okay, but I mean, God.
Oh, my God.
They're spotting up there every weekend.
That one is so good, as we get closer to it, I mean, it's like, you know, other ideas, they, they did have a huge checklist when we first met with them, other concepts that can work in our area.
So, well, they're trying, what they're trying to do, which is, you know, they're trying to figure out how to fill that gap of the slow time, what could they do there now?
Well, the value will come.
For the other nine months, and you can't say.
Yeah, so.
Most of the year?
Take that.
Well, the technology on the lagoon is key, so it wouldn't be a long season, it can just be, just.
Yeah.
Six months?
They're building a new one right now in Pittsburgh, so come forward.
That'll be interesting.
Now I see that one.
The one in Iceland, there's something there.
As they do their due diligence, go do due diligence on.
Can only imagine what it costs to eat a, how many acre lagoons?
That's why in Iceland, the ones that's there.
End up eating my hot tub, I can't imagine eating.
Contract of sale, some sort of due diligence period, you got to think about a mile, a milestone schedule in there, drawing that due diligence. Set some broad.
Yeah.
You know, you got a financing structure, you got, and we can work with Paul on that.
Site plan approval.
Yeah, set some targets for them, so that if they don't meet them targets, we can just say, look, we're.
Yeah, and I see, we did have a, the discussion that they threw out there, which James was kind of, I can do, was asking all questions of like, do you guys hold any paper on this?
No.
So one, one of the things they were asking was during construction period, um, uh, you know, their finance, you know, pre-construction, yeah, right. Before they can start building, right?
Yeah, I mean, why, why wouldn't we give them the property without real money? Right, I mean, I wouldn't hold papers for these people. I mean, I, I just, you know, e- even if we have a first lien position, then we have to go foreclosing and deal with it, you know, I wouldn't hold the property out, or they can pay us like a, 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 an applicable option. You know, but, you know, you never want to lose control of the property.
So what, how would you structure that, Paul, like, uh, several option payments before construction started?
Yeah, we would hold it, okay, and then that way it's better for them actually, because then the exemption is in place, so they're not paying property tax. But any payments they make to us during the period of time that we're holding pre-construction could be applicable to the purchase price.
Yeah, yeah, so we're trying, you know, I was trying to drill down with them on, um, their financing, but they didn't get a clear answer of how they were putting that together. It sounds like, you know, they've got some individual investors, who they are, I don't know, we talked about Argentina. You know, what's going on in Argentina, there are people trying to get money out of Argentina right now. Because of the class of the peso, so they may have some backing that could be legit, because if you have a lot of money in Argentina, you need to, it needs to go somewhere else. The best thing you can do is invest in real estate in the United States.
Still, still be there in theory.
Yeah, right. Yeah. So, yeah, Dirk will be there, but right now peso is evaporating.
It's been evaporating for like.
Oh, yeah, it's been going on, yeah, they, they went through the numbers, it's like a thousand, the one right now, he was telling the story, they had to bring like a duffel bag of money to pay like.
So God, they went, they sent the guy down and exchanged eight hundred bucks, hundred dollars.
You get a backpack.
He had to get a backpack.
Full of cash.
He goes back with a full backpack full.
They need to move some investment, investment points on a currency to read.
What did he say?
Now, like a hundred, I think it's twenty thousand. I think it's a thousand, I thought it was a thousand to one. I think it's a thousand to one.
So to give you a little bit of perspective, the last time I was there was probably five years ago. And the official rate was eight to one, when you went out onto the street, it was twenty to one. Think about how bad that is now, twenty to one to a thousand to one. Wealth evaporates.
That could be. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, we continue to work with them, the county, the county, uh, James is looking at, you know, whatever, whatever.
Well, I think at some point too, checking out that Pittsburgh, they're building a Pittsburgh operation right now.
That's what we read, they sent us an article on Pittsburgh, so it'll be the first.
Yeah, these guys aren't building it, because these are like franchises.
Yes, but it's the same concept.
That same concept.
I think if we just keep, look, this, this thing is totally consistent with what we wanted to do there. If this, if we can make this work, it's great, because it's a one shot, buy, I buy us out, one lump sum, no splitting up, wanting more property, no more investment in infrastructure. But we need, we were very, very clear with them, because you know, Eric, we are not gonna sit around here and jerk around with this thing.
We don't want to tie it up for a decade going up.
I think so, there's gonna, you're gonna have to move on this, now the good news in a way in my mind was that they are not pursuing Greens Lake. In terms of probate issues or something, or foreclosure issues, Aaron, they're not moving on that. So that makes me feel better, because I'm not trying to do two months to projects at once.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, we'll see.
Cause then the dollar's showing up, that's for sure, right?
How long is a Pittsburgh project supposed to take place? Kind of curious how long, you know, what's a construction plan on, on a project like this?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it two years, is it, what is it, you know?
I, I, I mean, I would think they want to time this thing so it's ready to open when your season hits, that you're, you're ready to go, right?
Yeah, I mean, I just don't see it getting done in one, in a one year cycle.
No.
I mean, just the site work alone.
Yeah.
Especially on our side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think you're doing all your outside stuff and by winter, you're, you're doing your inside stuff and by spring, it's ready to open, what I would think of the guy.
What is it, a membrane liner for the lagoon, like some kind of a rubber?
Essentially, there's, there's a concentration.
But I don't know, they actually, it may be actual, like the concrete types could be, you know? You know what I'm saying, like a, like a gunite spray, you know?
That's gonna freeze, freeze rocks out unless they keep it heated.
Well, it's a saltwater thing and they, they do heat it and they, they have some kind of, you know, technology or whatever that is, their, their special lagoon thing. That is part of what they're selling in their franchise, this, because they have some other ones in coal times too, don't they, some are, they got a couple around the world, I mean, there was one in.
Yeah, well, there's a bunch of them, yeah.
They built one in Israel, yeah, then so, yeah.
Dubai, Texas, and a lot different than upstate New York, but it's ten below zero on a particular.
I'll reset the presentation, I think there's a special, any presentation that talks about.
Just to, you can tell the stuff with them, I mean, there are companies that'll manage the whole.
Yeah.
Operation, I can send you one of them.
Alright, nice.
They just come in and.
For the dome.
Yeah.
Well, alright.
So if there's no other open questions, um, we can move into executive session, I just need a motion.
I have the motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
One second.
April, I'm remaining on.